Committee. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. School committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming the meeting on channel twelve and a recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible after the meeting. This is a hearing to solicit public input on a proposal to name the Long Meadow High School, Long Meadow Public Schools Retired School Adjustment Counselor and Track Coach, Don John Divine. All interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard. No votes are take place during this meeting. So first, I want to just very quickly explain one part of our protocol so that everyone visiting can understand the general rules. Public participation at committee meetings is B E D H. I'm not going to read the whole thing because it's ages. But the the idea is this, those that are here to speak and give us their opinion on the naming of the track will have three minutes to speak. If there are people representing a group of people, select one person to be the main speaker. That is helpful. Are subsequent speakers and they have things to add that have not been said yet. That is always accepted and people who are not and want to be heard will also be heard. But please try to keep to the three minute speaking goal if we can. If someone says they're representing, say, five, ten, twenty people, it is basically up to my discretion to allow it to go a little bit longer. So with that said, Superintendent O'Shea, if you could please explain what we're here to talk about.
Certainly. Thank you, Chairman Kelly. So thanks to all who have assembled tonight as a a public hearing to consider an application we received to name a Long Meadow Public School facility after a longtime employee and coach and the for everyone's who might be on the call for their benefit and understanding, excuse me one second, my lights went out. There you go. My apologies. So for everyone who might be on the call, this this application is done in accordance with committee policy FF relating to naming of school facilities. The our initial review of the application shows that it was submitted in in accordance with that policy. We do did well, let me before I get to that, so specifically, the application is name the track at Long Meadow High School after longtime coach and social worker John Devine. Mr. Devine served Long Meadow Public Schools for thirty two years as a coach and a adjustment counselor. I had the opportunity to work with John directly for many years, and he is worthy of our consideration. The proposal came to us in late October from Mary Henshaw. Mary and I have spoken many times and she was on the call tonight. And Mary had outlined for us the reasons the reasons for considering Mr. Divine as for naming the track. I will say that the application was complete and thorough and is available publicly. I believe it was posted with the meeting agenda. Is that correct, Mrs. Jurgant? If you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Thank you. So that information, both the school committee policy and the application are both publicly available. The to date, the after the application was received from Mary representing an interested group, we had sent it along to the school committees, the school committee, a naming subcommittee. The naming subcommittee moved that the application along to the entire committee. The entire committee in accordance with the policy decided to hold this public hearing. And then following this public hearing, the committee would vote at an upcoming meeting. So once again, the proposal is to name the track at Long Meadow High School after Mr. John Devine. And for clarification, the proposal is to name specifically the track and not the stadium as a whole. And Mary has, as the applicant has shared, that the that the proposal and the associated signage would come at no cost to the district. Mary has also certified that the Divine family is supportive of this application, which is a key component of the school committee policy. The we'll say that one of the, you know, we want to make sure that the proposal is in accordance with the school committee policy. We also want to make sure that the proposal is in accordance with any select board policies. I did receive some information from the town manager today that will cause us to to consider that a little bit more thoroughly. I want to make sure that you know, the the purview to name the track lies in fact with the school committee. So that is something that between now and the time that the school committee ultimately votes on this, we'll do some additional homework on that and make sure we have all the information the school committee needs. So with that, Chairman Kelly, I hope that's a good enough explanation. If there's anything else you or the committee need from me. If not, you're welcome to turn it over to a public comment.
Thank you. So again, as a public comment, you're going to say your name and your address. If you're representing a group of people, please let me know so that at my discretion, I can give you a little bit more time to talk. Other than that, people who are interested in speaking will just make themselves known. We have about fifty two people on the Zoom call right now. So you just have to forgive me while I flip through the screen to find out who is interested in speaking. Putting in the chat or using the raise your hand button on your computer will be helpful. As the applicant, Mary, I think it makes sense to start with you. I'm assuming you are interested in speaking. Yeah, I'll use the hand. Perfect. So we'll call on Mary Henshaw first.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for everybody for getting together and for all the people that are in attendance, especially to the school committee and to Superintendent O'Shea for organizing, you know, this whole process. I just wanted to kind of speak on behalf of, I think, the majority of the people, or I hope the majority of the people that are online right now. And then also the twelve hundred and sixty three people that we were fortunate enough to have sign our petition over the summer. Coach Devine is and still is one of the most fantastic people that I have had the pleasure of of working with. And certainly one of the people that helped shape me into who I am today during the time that I was at LHS. So I just kind of wanted to take a little bit, a little while to kind of pull out some of the highlights from the application and just talk about Coach Devine and and how awesome he is and why he is so supremely deserving of this honor. And, you know, having the track facility at LHS named for him where he spent so much of his thirty two year tenure at LHS coaching the girls' track and field team. I was a member of the team for four years. I went on to run track in college and among all of the coaches that I've had and all of the sports that I've played, he is one of the best. So without further ado, I'll kind of just pull out some of the highlights, like I said, from the application. Coach Devine was a social worker and I think his official title was School Adjustment Counselor and Ladies Track and Field Coach. He, as a track coach, created an environment that anybody could find success on the team, whether that was competitively or personally. He just really created an environment where people felt like they could succeed. No matter what their ability level was, he pushed people to do their absolute best, whatever, whatever that was. It was never about winning for him. It was always about inclusion and having everybody feel like they had accomplished something. He had, he has won a lot. Our team, you know, over the course of his tenure was very successful. I've highlighted a couple of articles and features and awards that he won on the track, but I think the bigger testament to him and to the naming and kind of why he is deserving of this honor is is less about the wins and more about the depth of the teams that he created and about the inclusivity that he created on the team for everybody. He not only was a fantastic coach, but he also was a great mentor even off the track. His office had an open door policy for anyone and everyone. And, you know, even from from my perspective, the people that were nice enough to respond on the petition with particular reasons for signing had indicated so many different reasons beyond just his abilities as a track coach. He was a fantastic counselor and someone who you felt comfortable with and who you knew you could trust and someone who you could infinitely respect. He created an environment for the track team that allowed a ton of people to sign up for track. It was not like many other varsity sports where it's really hard to get a spot. It was an environment that he allowed everyone to come and flourish. But he really focused on everyone using their athletic ability to further their own kind of their own mental space. And I think that especially in a time when things are so stressful and in high school, when everyone's kind of figuring themselves out. I think having a place that you can go and know that you're going to be supported is is really important and really essential for high school kids. And I'm just very grateful for all that Coach Devine kind of put forth for our school. In two thousand and nineteen, he was diagnosed with ALS. He is still fighting and is from what I can understand, doing pretty well. And we're we're really grateful to still have him with us. I think if I saw it in the participants, that at least one or two of his family members are online. So thank you guys for joining in. So I think that's that's pretty much all I have. I I invite everyone, if you didn't know Coach Devine, or even if you did, to go and review the application. I think that that really speaks volumes to to Coach Devine's contribution. And I think that the naming of the track is a very fitting way to honor him. I think that he spent a lot of his time there. Like I said, as as a coach, but also just as a person that you could interact with and who you felt like you could trust and would help you get through whatever it is that you were going through. So yeah, I think that's pretty much all I have. And I think I think I I speak for pretty much everybody that is online. So I'm not sure how or if anybody else would want to respond, but I think for the sake of brevity, I think I speak on behalf of most everybody.
Thank you, Mary. And as the applicant, obviously, I let Mary go over three minutes, but we all see the application. So we know that she has done a lot of work on this topic. So clearly, I was going to give her more time to speak. If there are people interested, because you want to have your name heard and say that you are here to support, I would welcome you if you would like to say that, you know, if I were to chime in and say, I'm right, Kelly, I was on track for four years, which is not true because I was an incredibly slow runner and soccer was my thing. But if I were a track person, I would come on and say, I support this. Thank you very much. If you want to just add that little, or if there are other people around who really want to say something why it's special, then we will from now on adhere to the three minute time limit. So anyone who would like to speak, if you want to use Allison, I see your face is lit up.
Yes, hi. So I'm Allison Akavaria. I graduated in two thousand and sixteen. And so Coach Devine had the, you know, he coached me, coached my two older brothers. And he's just a fantastic person. And I think Mary really outlined his like track and coaching abilities. But even after, you know, I went to college and I was in college, he was always checking in on me, making like saying, hey, do you want to go get coffee and talk about life? If you need any mentorship, I'm here for you. And so I was a diver in college. And he taught me ways to, you know, handle the pressure of game day and and everything. And he just continued to have that mentorship role even after I left high school. And so even while I was in high school, you know, I hated running. I still hate running. But I showed up every day because I knew that he was there and he was just trying to make me and my my fellow peers better because he loved what he did. And I think that's all you can ask for in a coach is for them to be as motivated to do this as you are. So I speak for my whole family, you know, we know him very well, and I can't think of a more deserving person for this honor than to have the track named after him just because of his personal, you know, influence on myself and my family. So I'll keep it brief, but I'm I'm definitely in very favor of this.
Thank you very much, Allison. Anyone else? I'm going to flick to see if anybody has clicked the little and icon, or if you would like to issue your screen and speak. That's another way to let me know that you're interested. Jacob, and also I'm I'm saying what's on the screen. That's not actually your name. Please introduce yourself to everybody.
That is, that is my name. I'm Jake Kelly. I live on Meadowbrook Road. I don't know. We're doing the address thing. That's where I live. I graduated high school in two thousand and seventeen. I was on the indoor track team for four years and the outdoor track team for two years. And I agree with everything Mary and Allison have both said. I think I know I was Allison's teammate at a point. I might have been Mary's teammate at a point. I'm not sure if we overlapped for one year. But I agree with everything I said, and I'm in favor of naming the track after Coach Devine. Track was never my original plan going into high school. I was big into lacrosse, but I wanted to play a winter sport, so I did indoor track. And on one of the first few days, Coach Devine called me over to try high jump and taught me through that a lot of lessons and also how to be a good high jumper. I went on to compete in the high jump at Villanova right now, and I'm continuing next year in grad school. And yeah, I think it's a fitting honor to name the track after Coach Devine for all the influence he's had on me and all the influence I know he's had on pretty much all of my high school teammates.
Thank you very much, Jacob. Mark's iPhone. I see you next. You have to unmute, Mark. Unmute.
Mark Henshaw. I'm from one oh four Fenwood, a lifelong Long Meadow resident. Graduated in nineteen eighty six. I am also a four year track runner. Not coached by Coach Devine. My three kids were. But I've got to say that in all my experiences through the high school years with my three that have gone through Long Meadow High School, Coach Devine was absolutely one of the most supportive and diligent role models in the school system. He coached three of my children. He was a friend. He was phenomenal, still is. I hope that this goes through because this is a deserving honor and I just feel like everything that my daughter Mary has said, as well as the other speakers prior to me is one hundred percent. He deserves this. So I absolutely support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Next person with their hand up is K L Heenan. It would be, there you go.
Hi, my name is Katie. I'm so sorry. I'm gonna start crying. My name is Katie Enen. I graduated in two thousand and fourteen along with Mary and I ran indoor and outdoor track all four years. And I really could not have said it better than how everybody else has praised Coach Devine. He really was such a great coach and mentor and friend, really. I mean, obviously, there are days where you go to practice. You know, I'm sure people who have gone to practice at any point in their life, whether they're five up through college, you know, there are times where you don't want to do something. And Coach Devine will make you a better person, whether that's saying, hey, it's okay if you're having a hard day or if he knows you really well, which he usually does, he'll say, hey, we can push through this. And you're gonna make, you're gonna have a PR or he's really, really great at motivating, not even just at practice, but obviously meets any other sport post-high school. And you know, I I was just talking to my other friend that's on the line and I I agree, I think. And I, I agree. I think good people deserve good things. And I really, really would love for the track to be named after him. He really deserves it.
Thank you very much. I know at the beginning, I, I kind of gave a preamble that may have made people not want to raise their hand and speak. As far as school committee meetings goes, we're being pretty efficient. If there's anybody else, nobody else has their hand up at the moment, but if there's anyone else who would like to. Patsy Ahern, I see you raising your hand.
Yes. Both my sons graduated from Long Meadow and they both did indoor and outdoor track. One graduated in two thousand and ten and one in two thousand and thirteen. And I just can't say enough, I agree with everybody that Coach Divine deserves this. More than anything. He's just been a true mentor to so many kids. Who went to Long Meadow High and participated in the track program. So. My younger son that graduated in two thousand and fourteen. Coach Divine gave him the coaches award at the award ceremony, which. Was very, very touching for our whole family. Because we'd been through some difficulties and it was such an honor that he recognized. You know, my son's ability and he truly deserves this. With Long Meadow being the powerhouse that it is and all the bigger sports that they gave it to a track runner. Was, you know, very humbling. So I truly hope that this happens and the track is named for him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next hand raised I have is Christina Capinos.
Hello. Hey, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate and reiterate everything that anyone has said so far. And a lot of things that were said in the original application. I was, I did track, oh my gosh, twenty thousand and nine through two thousand and twelve. And I just have to say that running and jumping for Coach Divine gave me something in the school system. That I didn't get anywhere else, just having that support and having. That activity and, and community of people. High school is tough. And, you know, I kind of found my niche there and excelled. And like someone else was saying, like, you know, having a bad day and not wanting to go to practice, like you did it for Coach. And, you know, that's, that was very important for me and you didn't want to let him down. And that's definitely why there is nobody else more deserving than him. And not only does he deserve it, but it's appropriate for him to be, for the track to be named after him. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Megan Franz.
Hi, I'm Megan Franz. I grad, I'm, live on Birch Road. I graduated in two thousand and sixteen and I just wanted to get on here to represent a group of girls. That I'm still friends with today because of Divine and because of the track team. So I want to give them a little shout out so we can, I'm representing them all tonight. Lauren Stone, Haley Dano, Rachel Craze and Taylor McHugh. I, like all, everyone has said before, I can't think of anyone more deserving of this ever. For someone who is just a coach, you go through in life and having a lot of different. Coaches and teammates and because of him. I have lifelong friends that, and memories that I'll have forever. And I think this is a great way to keep his memory alive. For people who might not get the chance to know him or have him as a coach. He's truly amazing person. And I, I, I just think this would be an amazing opportunity to give him something for his family, his friends. And his, all of his people that he's coached, something to remember him by. Love you, Coach Divine, if you're on here, by the way.
Thank you very much, Megan. Next up, pardon me if I say your name wrong, Remke Bouvier.
Hi, guys. My name's Remka. I also ran on the team for four years and it was my favorite part of high school. I'm currently running at Holy Cross. Would not have gotten on the team without Coach Divine's help. So I wouldn't be here like in this position today if I didn't have him. And I just wanted to say that I will always remember our hugs after our great races. And I think of them when I still race. And I hope that people will think of him when they step on the track. When it is named in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I see Taylor McHugh.
Hi, I'm Taylor McHugh. I live on seventeen Park Drive South. And I kind of wanted to reiterate basically what everyone was saying. But just touch upon a lot of what Megan Franz and Remka had to say. Without Coach Divine's help and his inspiration and motivation, I don't think I would be a collegiate athlete today. For those of you who have ran, I kind of started out as a four hundred, two hundred runner. And he just saw so much potential in me that I didn't see in myself. And it really made me motivated to push myself beyond what I thought I could do. Close to my junior and senior year, he told me before he retired, he said. I really think you should give the four hundred hurdles a shot, you know. You would be excellent at it and I don't think you see it in yourself now, but you will. And I said, all right, well, if you believe in me, then you know, I must go for it. So, and I also had such like great mentors on the team, like Remka and Megan. And lifelong friends that, you know, gave me the inspiration to do it. And because of all of them, I now do that in college to my surprise. I never thought I would get there at all. But he just means so much to me and all the memories that he's created. Just continue to inspire me to push forward with this passion. So I really stand by this decision.
Thank you very much, Taylor. Fiona Noonan.
Hi, I'm Fiona Noonan from one seventeen Ducksbury Lane. I'm an LHS graduate from two thousand and seventeen. And I was on the indoor and outdoor track team for all four years and the captain. And ran alongside many of the other people who have spoken. I would just like to reiterate what everyone else has said. And I also recently recalled that in two thousand and seventeen, we dedicated the yearbook to Coach Divine. Upon his retirement as a school adjustment counselor, which I think is really indicative of his impact on the school. And he was super encouraging to me and all of my fellow teammates. And I was really surprised when he selected me as a captain senior year and he saw something in me that I hadn't seen myself. Much like so many other students have mentioned about him seeing things in us that we didn't see or didn't notice at the time and really prepared us for college. So I'm also in support of this measure and I can't think of anyone more deserving.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody who has raised their hand to speak. Obviously, it's heartfelt and the coach had a great impact on you. I would also like to mention that if you want to send an email to the Long Meadow School Committee stating your reasons for support. Obviously, only, we've only heard support. I don't know if anyone, I haven't heard from anyone who doesn't support the idea. But obviously, if there was someone who didn't support it, they could write us a letter too. But I've heard nothing but support. So if you all wanted to send a letter to us, an email to the school committee outlining your support and why, we would accept those as well. And that's just another way to have your voice heard and let us know what you think. Seeing all their hands at the moment, I was going to ask, and Gianna's ahead of me. I was going to ask the committee members if any of them would like to say anything. And Gianna, your hand's up already, so you want to go first?
Oh, actually before, yeah, I would definitely love to just thank it. But there's a, I don't know if you need to read. There's a comment in the, in the chat, Ryan.
So I guess I'll read it. Gabrielle Cratchmoyer. Hello, everyone. Public speaking isn't really my thing, but I would like to say I one hundred percent support naming the track after Coach, after John Divine. My name is Gabrielle. I live on Pinewood Drive. I graduated from LHS in two thousand and eight. And my siblings also participated in indoor and outdoor track from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twelve. Coach Divine's spirit, every single day I practice, bus rides, meets and everything in between is unparalleled. I believe this would be an appropriate way to honor him and all that he has done for Long Meadow students, teammates and lifelong friends. Thank you. Thank you also, Gabrielle. So there's another example of how you can have your voice heard with us. Gianna, would you like to say something else?
Yes, thank you, Ryan. I just again wanted to, to thank Mary and Coach Divine and his family for. Just the inspiration. I'm a social, social adjustment counselor myself. So reading all of those comments on the, on the, you know, the twelve hundred plus that Mary was talking about. It was just, it was an honor and inspiration to get to read those comments. And I think I saw Mrs. Divine on, on the call and I just wanted to say thank you for your family's service and inspiration. And Mary, again, thank you so much for taking this initiative and to everybody who was here speaking. On behalf of, of your own, you know, interactions with Coach and also for your own inspiration. And just thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Gianna. Kevin or Bronwyn? Bronwyn, go ahead.
Thank you. I actually had the pleasure of coaching track and field a long time ago with Mr. Divine. We had a great time and he was all these. These people have said and more as a person and a coach. And I'm sure there's many more people out there that share the same sentiments that all of you do. And I just want to say I appreciate everyone coming to the meeting and offering their support. And Mr. Divine is amazing. Thanks.
Thank you, Brad. Kevin?
Yeah, Ryan, can you hear me all right?
Perfectly.
So, yeah, I, again, just like everybody else said, thanks to everybody for all their hard work. Mary, really great job on the application. And it really is wonderful to hear all of his runners talk about what Coach Divine meant to them. My son Matthew ran indoor track and I talked to him about this proposal and he was also completely in favor. And, and he said his teammates also thought it was a wonderful idea. So I agree with, with what Ryan has said. Everybody is in favor of this. Lots of positive comments and really just great work and a great tribute to a lifelong educator. And somebody who clearly had an amazing impact on the Long Meadow community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. You know, as you, as you may guess from hearing some of us talk, we have a lot of educators and coaches and former coaches. Who sit on the committee. Actually, I think most of us have coached and played something. So hearing a coach and an educator get the kind of praise that we're hearing, that we read in the application, that you read in the comments. And that which we've heard tonight is really the kind of thing that convinces all of us to go into education. That's the kind of impact we want to have. So reiterate my colleagues in saying thank you very much for coming out tonight and giving support to Coach Divine. And for the application itself, which was very well done by Mary. Before we wrap up, I just want to make sure if there's anybody else interested in, in speaking, you have the opportunity to do so. All you got to do is raise your hand or unmute yourself and speak and then I'll be happy to call on you.
Yeah, I can, I can add.
Go ahead. Let's see, Chris Johns there?
Yeah. I graduated last year from LHS. I did outdoor track for four years and indoor for two. I never was coached by Coach Divine directly, like he was never. And, you know, as my coach, when I was doing track. But when, this must have been my junior year for indoor. I qualified for All States, which was pretty cool. And my coaches left for the Italy trip. Coach Divine came every day to the high school. And coached me before my meet. And then he came all the way to Boston with me as well. For the meet, you know, when my coaches were gone. So, you know, I thought. That was pretty amazing. He's been an amazing coach and amazing for the track program. You know, me personally, track opened up a lot of doors for me. Would be doing track at Providence College for the next four years. And, you know, all that was kind of made possible because of him. He really sort of. You know, got the program going and opened a lot of doors for a lot of people. And there's really no reason why the track should not be named after Coach Divine.
Excellent. Thank you. Tom Landers.
Thanks. I just wanted, on behalf of the faculty, it's so inspiring to see so many alumni here tonight. And it's, it's clear that John has the ability to make so much of, so many of us feel important when he is in our presence. He, and it's, in a, in a time where sports can be so controversial at times. It's so inspiring and so great to hear what an awesome effect years later he has had on so many students. So I just wanted to quickly say, not just on my behalf, but on the behalf of the LHS faculty, we support this. We love John Divine. We miss him as an integral part of LHS every day. And stay strong, John. I believe John and Debbie are on this call. So be well, John, and God bless. And thank you, Mary Henshaw, for bringing this forward and all your great work. Thank you.
Well said. Thanks, Tom. Okay, so if that is all of our speakers, committee members, I can entertain a motion. So that is, we're not voting tonight. That would just be a motion. We've had all our, our speakers. I just want to make sure last, have a last call to make sure there's anybody else who wants to talk. Make yourself known. So Marty, before we wrap up, before I take that motion, can you just remind people the next steps of what's going to happen?
So we'll, we'll do the final vetting on the application. I suspect I'll be in touch with Mary one more time. And it will be before the school committee for a final vote. If we're, we're ready to go, we have all the i's dotted and t's crossed. It will be at your January twenty-sixth meeting, if not the first meeting in February. So we'll, we'll work hard to get it in front of the committee as soon as we possibly can. And it's so heartwarming to hear all the stories that certainly confirm my, my direct experience with, with Coach John Divine. Wonderful man and, and he remains in our prayers throughout the challenges that he's facing. Thank you, Mary, for bringing the application forward.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Now I'll entertain a motion.
I'm happy to do that, Ryan, if you want.
Please.
I move that we adjourn our open hearing.
Is there a second? Any discussion on that from the committee members? You've seen, going to call a vote, Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Yes, for me. So we are adjourned again. Thank you, everybody, for coming and come to our next school committee meeting. We'll check the agenda and make sure it's on the next meeting and then come to it again. Thank you all very much.